Nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Lupi Moye, Member of the Church of Jesus Christ, Latter-day Saints, and then please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Lupi?
Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we are so grateful for all that we have. May we take some time to reflect on all the goodness that we have and the kindness and compassion that is in our lives. We come before thee at the beginning of our council meeting and we ask thee that we will be able to, uh, voice things that need to be discussed and that everyone will be able to express themselves and that we will have a special spirit of peace and we also ask thee to bless those that cannot take care of themselves, those that are homeless, those that are sick and afflicted, and also our children. We ask thee to bless everyone here and especially at this Christmas time that we'll, uh, enjoy goodwill and compassion to all. Please be with each of the speakers that their comments will be made known and to clarify things that need to be discussed. These favors and blessings we ask thee for in the name of our beloved Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Crater.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
McCandless.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. Mayor, please. I'd like to move tonight to suspend the council rules and allow non-residents to speak. Okay?
I'll second.
It's got a second. Got a motion in a second to allow non-citizens to speak. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and if I could vote twice, I would vote you twice. Um, okay. Uh, so we've suspended the rules to allow citizens to speak.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to modify the agenda so that twenty-two eight thirty-one can be addressed before citizen comments.
Okay. And that is recognizing Brett Smedley, or excuse me, Brett Smedley for the I-Star presentation. Is that correct?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart. McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, okay. Uh, then we will recognize Officer Smedley and then we will go on to citizens' request if I'm hearing everyone correctly. So with that, uh, we have an I-Star Award this month for Officer Smedley. On many occasions, Officer Smedley has gone above and beyond for us here at the animal shelter. A couple of months ago, when we didn't have any Band-Aids for our staff, he went and bought them with his own money and spent fifty dollars cash of his own money to help the shelter. He's also brought an overheating dog to the shelter that was running stray and had a dog tag. After getting the owner information and locating the owners, the suspected owner blocked the city's number. Officer Smedley responded to their address in an attempt to reunite them with their animal, but also to hold them accountable for abandoning their animal. Anytime Officer Smedley comes to the shelter, he always asks if he needs, if they need anything and if he can be of help in any way. It's always very nice to know that we have some allies in the city who are there whenever we need them for the shelter. Officer Smedley even provided his personal cellphone number to me so that he could get, so we could get help at any time. These actions by Officer Smedley are inherent in who he is as a person. He goes above and beyond in his service to his community. So with that, I would like to recognize Officer Smedley.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-two dash eight-three-one.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Don't we have to do citizens' requests first?
No, no, that's.
That's the resolution.
Oh, uh, please forgive me. Yep, okay.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We've got a motion in a second to approve the resolution. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
I'll read the bill first. Bill number twenty-two dash eight-three-one, a resolution recognizing Brett Schmeldy, Police Officer with the Independence Police Department as the I-Star Award recipient for December twenty-twenty-two. Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Now we can go on to citizens' request. Okay. I just have one comment before citizens' request and, um, so on December twelfth, we had a study session and we talked about trash collection. And that has prompted many of you to be here tonight. Yes. And we hear you. Uh, just to give you a sense, these are the emails I've personally received. These are all the emails I've personally received. Uh, there you go. Well done, well done. Now, there's been some information put out saying that we're trying to put businesses out of business. That is not the case. Our goal as a council is to look at a way to be more efficient and for us to work together. We're looking for a win-win-win solution. What I mean by that is you, as the haulers, have a win and are more efficient and make more money by being more efficient in a more compacted area that you choose, okay? Along with citizens in those areas. So that's one. We want the citizens to get better pricing and, and also have service where they've only got trashcans out once a week. So that's an advantage there. Also, to save dramatically on the street damage that's done by so many haulers going up and down the street with really heavy trucks. So what we're trying to do is how do we find a way to bring all of these ideas together so that, and so we just introduced the idea. We, we have no plans on the table. We have no resolutions. We have no ordinances. We have no bills. We have nothing like that. What we want to do is hear feedback and we're glad you're here tonight. So we've got a number of people who are here to talk tonight and you will have the opportunity to do that, uh, in the order that they were collected. So we welcome you to be here. This is your city and we want to hear your concerns. But also, uh, in that, we just want to frame it in the fact that we want to sit down with the haulers. We want to sit down with citizens. We want to sit down with everyone because it's a decision that we will all make together. And our goal as council members is to make sure that we listen. And so we're certainly here to listen and if you still want to comment, or if you just want to come up and say I'm opposed to it, or I want to at least hear the plans, the proposals, that's it. You, you do have time to speak. We want to encourage you to do that. You're welcome to do that. This is your city. But I just wanted to frame the discussion about, uh, how it was done. The nicest email I got was from a woman who said, "I watched the city council agenda. I understand what you're trying to do. I think we need to have a robust discussion." And I agree with her. Uh, she didn't, she was not in favor or opposed because of her opinion of it. She just said, "Hey, how do we get together and how do we make this work?" So with that being said, I just wanted to frame the discussion, uh, before we had the discussion. So with that being said, we've had one person who signed up ahead of time and he, he is actually speaking for a group, so he gets ten minutes if he chooses. And this is Philip Dickey. And Philip, if you can come up and state, uh, the address you're at and your reason for coming before the council. So thank you for being here.
Good evening. Um, my name is Philip Dickey. I live at twenty-four oh-one Ellison Avenue, Ellison Way. It's on the corner of Twenty-third Street and two ninety-one. Forgive me, I'm a little nervous tonight.
It's okay. I understand.
Does my time start now or?
Yes, please.
Um, it's an honor again to speak with you tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of my neighborhood and, uh, my, uh, to landmark it, it's right behind two ninety-one and, uh, and Twenty-third Street, right behind Marcos Pizza. And, uh, my family moved to Independence this year. We bought our first home, again, we bought our first home after a long search on South Ellison Way. Before we even got out of the car to view our home, we were greeted by the neighbors. We felt welcomed and saw the home. It was great starter home for us. We closed and moved in, in, uh, the July of twenty-twenty-two. Fast forward to a few weeks ago, we noticed our local pizza shop Marcos, uh, at the top of the hill, six houses away from us, getting in a new business. Uh, we moved, uh, that moved next door. We asked the, and inquired with several Marcos Pizza staffers, uh, what was moving in. Employees said they were, uh, not permitted to, to say, um, okay, my, we thought, along with several of our neighbors. Uh, the day this, uh, the day the sign in front of the store went up for the adult store called Romantics was in utter shock, disbelief, and honestly, a little angry. Um, we just moved in and an adult store moved in up the street from us. In fact, after speaking with a few neighbors, they did not know what Romantics is. After much thought, prayer, and conversation among neighbors, I decided to find out more about the happenings of why this business moved in. Before I even, uh, called, uh, before this evening, I even called the city planning and zoning to see if it was up to code and legal to be operating. I've had conversations with Marcos Pizza Corporation and canvassed our neighborhood on Ellison Way and Queen Ridge Boulevard, um, to hear their thoughts. Planning and zoning assured me that they were within code and legal to operate, um, and to my surprise and my neighbor's surprises. After reading the code myself, I will disagree with this. Marcos Corporate said that they have received several complaints over the phone and via email. Also learning of our neighborhood petition, Corporate, um, informed us that it was a franchised Marcos and that the franchisee owns the building at the whole, meaning both businesses, um, operate there. As they might disagree, as they might disagree with the, uh, building, um, and the franchisee, the franchisee putting up, uh, Romantics, um, it is out of Marcos' control. Our neighborhood, our neighborhood, as I said before, can, I canvassed our neighborhood, uh, speaking with many of them. I got to know them and their thoughts of Romantics moving into our neighborhood. Excuse me. Um, here, uh, here what my neighborhood had to say. Not everyone knew that Romantics was moving in, um, or what type of business they operate. Like myself, many were shocked to hear what was moving in once I told them. Before I could even ask their thoughts on the issue, conversation of safety of our neighborhood, conversation for our children, single mothers, elderly, bus routes, families that pick up pizza next door to Romantics, the property value decreases were brought up as well. Did you know that according to Realtor.com, adult entertainment stores decrease values of homes up to fourteen point seven percent? Who will make the, up the difference of my home and my neighbor's homes? Some tenured neighbors remember the halfway home that moved in across the street from Romantics and were, um, they came to council, I guess, and asked about that and they felt like their voices were not heard. I ask that the council in our city recognize my neighborhood's voices in opposition of Romantics in our neighborhood. Third, asking our neighborhood's thoughts about the issue and if they, uh, they are for or against Romantics, eighty-five percent of our, my neighborhood, um, said that they do not wish it. The other fifteen percent, I couldn't get a hold of. After canvassing our neighborhood, it is evident we do not want Romantics or adult entertainment in our neighborhood. A majority of the neighbors now knowing Marcos Pizza franchise owns the building, um, next door will not participate, um, will not go to Marcos Pizza anymore. Before going, uh, on to my research of, um, before going into my research on Independence planning and zoning ordinances, I would like to talk about Romantics. If you search Romantics online, they promote themselves as America's adult retailer. Other locations in other states have arcade-type atmospheres in addition to retail space. Our point is that they are known in public and promote themselves as an adult entertainment store. They have a sign on their door that you have to be over eighteen to enter. Independence should treat them as such. We now, we now would like to bring your attention back to the planning and zoning coordinate, uh, codes. After reviewing the current guidelines, we believe the city is wrong with allowing this type of business at its current location. Stating Article five seventeen, Special Condition A, facility shall not be permitted within twelve hundred feet of any religious institution, school, or public park, or any property zoned for residential use. My house is seven hundred feet. I repeat, my house is seven hundred feet according to Google Maps and there are six other homes between my property and the building. Also stating Article five seventeen, Special Condition B, no adult entertainment facility shall be allowed to locate or expand within one thousand feet of any business licensed to sell or serve alcoholic beverages. Directly across the street from the building is gas, is a gas station, Discount Smoke Shop. They sell alcohol beverages. Also, behind Marcos and Romantics is a price chopper, a business that sells alcoholic beverages. Soon QuickTrip is moving into the corner of two ninety-one and Twenty-third Street. They will also be selling alcoholic beverages. If my property is seven hundred feet away, six properties separate us, it's safe to say Discount Smoke Shop alone is within one thousand feet of Romantics. Along with Article five seventeen, Special Condition C, states there should only be one outdoor mounted sign. There are two on the building, one facing Ellison Way and one facing Twenty-third Street. Also, in Section C, it discusses what cannot be seen on the premises. This too, we believe, is a huge issue. You can clearly see the back of the store, much of the product. We can clearly point out, Special Condition C, no merchandise or pictures of product or entertainment on the premises shall be displayed in window area where such merchandise or pictures can be viewed from the sidewalk in front of the building. No product seen to anyone is no product seen, and yet there are merchandise, uh, shown clearly from the windows, maybe not during the day, but at night you can clearly see in. You can clearly see the whole store with its merchandise from Ellison Way, the parking lot of Marcos Pizza, and sidewalk along the store. This is distasteful, disrespects our neighborhood. Again, Romantics isn't welcomed in our neighborhood. The Independence is the fifth largest city in the state of Missouri. Other communities look up to the city. We need to recognize and continue this set of standards and positive family values in Independence. We are surrounded by neighbors whom have lived in our two blocks since the nineteen-seventies, if not before. I have heard many stories about our neighborhood and we do not want Romantics to be a part of it. Researching things for tonight, we want to point out Independence Strategic Plan it has for the twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-six, which can be found in the city website. It reviews the purpose statement, mission statement, goals, and objectives of our city. I am sure you know them, as some tonight worked hard to develop them. But as we read them, can't help but see how businesses like Romantics don't uphold the values of our city and our community, small and at large. Our neighborhood feels as though this is an important issue. We do not want businesses like this at our doorstep. Many of our neighbors feel that this, this way, um, as stated earlier. We want our voices heard and recognized with positive action from the city. So our, so our neighborhood asks for the council to do a few things. One, review the city code, Article five seventeen, Special Conditions A, B, and C. Look at the points we brought up and discontinue this business.
You have one minute.
Oh, sorry. Thank, thank you. Secondly, uh, review the city codes regarding adult businesses that make stronger changes. Our neighborhood suggests a one thousand five hundred foot buffer between, um, the adult businesses and residential neighborhoods. Other cities require, um, surveys with two to three miles, um, of said stores. Third, please hear the voices of our neighborhood. Revolts Romantics license ASAP. We do not want adult businesses on the corner of South Ellison Way and Twenty-third Street. Thank you for your time tonight. It's been an honor. Sorry if I've been a little bit nervous, but I really want my point across that this business should not be in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. You did an excellent job. Appreciate it. Uh, next is Dusty Farrell, and if you could please state your, uh, address and reason for discussing. Dusty, good to see you.
Nice to see you. Hi, my name is Dusty Farrell. I reside at two-six-nine-one-seven East Flynn Road, Independence, Missouri, six-four-zero-five-seven. Hi, my name is Dusty Farrell. I'm here to speak in opposition to any resolution over the newly proposed solid waste program considerations, the study that was aired December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. I'm the third generation trash hauler at Ted's Trash Service. My grandpa Ted started this company back in nineteen sixty. He passed it on down to my father as ran it up into this past year, which happy retirement death. Um, now I have the tremendous honor to carry on this legacy. Hopefully my son Dylan will be the fourth generation to keep this company thriving. That is unless the city council decides to vote in favor of the options that they have presented. Speaking of family, we have a whole crew of amazing employees that we consider to be family. Most of these men and women call Independence their home. Many were born and raised here and they pay taxes here. When I was lucky enough to hear from a friend that this study session was held, I was shocked that I had not heard about it before, considering my line of work. How can you have a taxpayer-funded study session about illegal dumping and littering and somehow come up with these three solutions? The first option, which these were all bullet points in the study, the first option to bid out the entire city to one waste hauler, like Kansas City, Missouri has done. You can see changing to a municipal one-hauler option has created more illegal dumping and littering than before. Just drive through the side streets. The city of Kansas City only allows two bags per week and then charges you two dollars and fifty cents per tag for extra bags over the allotted two. So if you have a bunch of extra trash from a holiday or family event, like we're about to have here, just cleaning out your home, dispose of ten extra bags will cost you more than it costs for an entire month at Ted's Trash Service, not to mention we allow up to eight bags per week. So this does not change anything with illegal dumping. The second option, zoned sections to the haulers. Bid out zoned sections to the haulers does not make any sense because whoever can bid out the whole city can bid out each zone as cheap as they want. So whoever gets all the zones is granted the entire city anyway. So you can throw that out the window. The third option is to add it to the water or utility bill, which would be an administrative nightmare. We at Ted's Trash Service, we handle over one thousand calls per week. If you grant this, uh, option here, um, I don't know how you're gonna, the city's gonna handle the influx of calls, especially granting just one position with the proposed layout. These, in my opinion, very problematic so-called solutions create a monopoly for the small locus, local service providers that cannot compete with the big-name companies that own landfills or transfer stations. This also takes away our amazing customers and residents of Independence the freedom to choose which hauler fits, uh, their needs. If the city were to go to a one-hauler option, you will over time see increased rates like you probably have on your water and power bills and lack of customer service. By a simple Google search of the surrounding city's problems with waste removal service, you will find several articles with problems that have occurred with the one-hauler concept opinion, option. In my opinion, the best solution would be to set up game or hunting cameras in these problematic dumping areas. There you could enforce the laws against the illegal dumping and littering with these guys, I'm sure. The other option, in my opinion, would be to require all property owners to retain waste removal service throughout the year, which you guys presented as well, and I thought that was actually a great idea. This would be as simple as showing proof of receipt of a customer info with your current waste haul, uh, waste removal provider. The software, uh, software system we use to manage our accounts will quickly create a report or receipt for the customer that can show that the trash is being paid for at the residence. The other issue that was mentioned was the meeting was increased truck traffic. We at Ted's Trash Service listened to the city council bring this up a few years ago.
You have one minute.
We took this problem head-on and spent over a year and a large sum of money to rectify consolidating our routes into the same areas each day. This keeps the trucks from crossing paths, puts them all in the same areas working together as a team. We also noticed a study that Lisa Reynolds and Zach Walker brought up into the study session held on December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. The study they found says that trash trucks create as much damage as fourteen hundred cars passing through. How does a trash truck that weighs on average thirty thousand pounds amount to fourteen hundred times the damage of what an average car weighs around three thousand pounds? I don't know. I apologize, but simple math seems to make the truck weighing thirty thousand pounds cause ten times the damage of a three thousand pound car, not fourteen hundred. We would also like to see that study in detail. I know it says something about the weather being a part of the problem as well. Also, why aren't we questioning the fact that there are several other heavy equipment trucks on the roads daily in Independence? So why are you singling out the waste haulers? We all are here in solidarity to say we oppose any future resolutions moving forward with this study. We would like to see something put in place that would ensure bidding the city out to one haulers is never an option. Please reconsider moving forward with anything related to the recent study solutions from the study meeting held on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and thank you all for your local support.
Welcome you all here, but we're not going to clap after our crease speaker, okay? We've got to maintain decorum. This is a business meeting. It is not a sporting event. It is not a rock and roll event. So I appreciate you being here. I know you're passionate. The reason I'm on the city council is I'm passionate about our city. But please be respectful to everyone here because not everyone's talking about that issue, if you could please. Just, and I didn't warn you, so please forgive me. Um, all right. Thank you. Erin Talcutt, you're next up. And Erin, if I could just ask one favor, please do not mention any staff when you're discussing the issue. Just talk about the policy and the policy perspective, but if somebody presented an idea, talk about the idea, not the person, if you could please. I'd be grateful. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, good evening. I'm Erin Talcutt. I live at nineteen oh-one South Lake Drive. I believe IPL provides service to about fifty-nine thousand households and businesses in Independence, so I'm using that rough number in discussing the trash proposal presented at last Monday's study session. The one dollar administration fee that was suggested during the presentation would equal fifty-nine thousand dollars per month or seven hundred and eight thousand dollars per year. Would there also be additional franchise fee and taxes to increase that total? In any case, that is a lot of new money for the city to play with. If it costs the city three hundred thousand dollars to clean up the homeless camps and illegal dumping, that would still leave four hundred and eight thousand dollars minus the proposed coordinator's salary. That's a lot of play money that unfortunately, based on city council's, past city council's policies and actions, we cannot trust will be used appropriately or equitably for all Independence residents. In my opinion, this trash proposal as presented appears to be a runaround of the city charter. If the city mandates the purchase of trash service, payment of an administration fee, and possibly for the trash service itself on the utility bill, and dictates which company will provide our trash service while we have no voice in the matter, how is this not creating a new municipal service? If the city controls every, controls the contract in every aspect of how that service is delivered, hires a trash coordinator to run the program, determines who and how the trash ordinance will be enforced, how is this not creating a new municipal service? The city would be mandating and providing a municipal service but just simply contracting out the hauling portion, just like IPL contracts out for tree trimming for their department. The city charter under Public Works Department, Section three point two oh, paragraph four, outlines that the department already has the responsibility to collect and dispose of garbage, ashes, and refuse, and dispose of sewage. So these activities, the beautification efforts as they are being called, should already be budgeted for. It is disingenuous to say that this proposal would free up municipal workers to do their responsibilities when the charter outlines that they should be doing these things anyway. I would also encourage you to review Sections three point one four and three point one eight under the public utilities in the charter. My husband and I like our trash provider, Ted's by the way, and I think they have a right to operate their business competitively and reliably in our city. We want to keep our right to choose which business we want to support with our own money. We want them to be able to operate their business in a manner that is profitable for them, yet beneficial and economical for the customers. If that ever gets out of balance, we want to keep the right to change providers. For a council that says it is trying to bring in new business, how it is, how is it a good look to potentially run off six legally operating businesses? The local favorite, Ted's Trash, has been located and operated in the city for over sixty-two years. How does that look to businesses contemplating starting in or moving to Independence when local favorites are treated with such callousness? National companies- National companies like Republic may have an advantage, yet look what happened in Holden, Chilhauie, Kingsville, and Pleasant Hill, Missouri, when Republic acquired Heartland Waste as the city's sole trash service. It wasn't pretty. I can envision the city wasting more money on more studies on this proposal, defending possible lawsuits, opening the doors to cronyism, or at a minimum, paying for the issue to end up on the ballot. So how much in the end could this trash proposal really cost us? I understand the need for a beautification program, and I understand the city's need to find creative revenue sources. But if we had focused on running the city efficiently, saying no to pet projects and special interests, watching overtime budgets, and prioritizing funds to maintain infrastructure and necessary city services, we wouldn't be in this predicament or stepping on so many toes in this trash proposal.
You have one minute.
I respectfully request that the council drops any pursuit of taking over trash services. It is not good for the trash businesses or their customers, and ultimately, for the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erin. Next up, we have Teddy Farrell.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Teddy Farrell. I'm a second-generation owner of Ted's Trash Service. I am here to speak in opposition to any resolution over the new proposal, solid waste program considerations, a study that was aired December 12th, 2022. Excuse me, getting old. Good evening, Mayor Rowland and council members. I'm sorry we are meeting under these circumstances. After hearing through a second party what is trying to be passed before us, I am here to fight for our family business and our hard-working, excuse me, extended family, our employees and their families. My father and mother started this business 62 years ago. We are now into the third generation with my son Dusty, whom I'm very proud of. I am confident that he will continue the level of service that has built our company today and what our customers deserve. I am opposed to a one-hauler provider. I have been in this business literally all my life, and I have seen many companies come and go. I have seen cities take over the trash service and run the little man out of business. I have seen companies bid cities and then get in over their heads with rising costs and labor shortages, which in turn affects the quality of services for the residents and leaves the city holding the bag, pun intended. Ted's has addressed the concerns of previous councils regarding route efficiency by implementing route optimization software. Ted's also has a free drop-off recycling facility for the Independence community. There are six licensed haulers that are perfectly capable of handling the disposal needs of the city. The competition we have is very healthy for the citizens of this community. It allows the citizens to choose who they want for the best service and the best price. Back when my dad started hauling trash, the landfill rate was $1 per truckload. Customers had 55-gallon burn barrels in their backyard, and he would dump the barrels once monthly for $1 per month. Today, we pay in excess of $500 per truckload. We service our customers weekly with a $300,000 piece of equipment with two to three men teams for a reasonable cost. We have experienced extraordinary price increases with $5 per gallon diesel fuel and price increases in every other aspect of our business. We strive to give our customers the best service they deserve. I also give everyone at our company great respect and appreciation for continuing my father's service level standards. I hope you will remove this discussion from your agenda. Please consider the effect this will have on our 70-plus hard-working men and women, employees, and their families who rely on the job, on their job at Ted's Trash Service to support their family. In closing, I would like to say thank you to our valued customers that took time out of their evening and away from their families to support this local family business. I am very humbled. Mayor Rowland and council members, I appreciate your time and hope you will contact and speak with licensed haulers in the future to achieve your goals concerning disposal of trash. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Next is David Titus. Did I say that correctly, David?
Yes.
If you can come up and please state your name and your address, please.
My name is David Titus, and I live at 20800 East Truman Road. I'm just concerned about this proposal. I live near Lake City Gardens, and we're struggling with other utilities, for instance, internet right now. The only choice I have is Comcast because they're saying AT&amp;T says that we're not profitable enough for them. Therefore, if you have customer service issues, you call a 1-800 number, and you're not gonna get the service. If we do this with the trash service and you go with these commercial companies that have bought these others up, we're not gonna get the service, and we're not gonna get the price breaks because they've got no competition. So it's important that we have competition in all of our utilities. So I would like to propose that we deny this thing, and we should stick with having competition in all levels. And while you're at it, bring in some other competition for the Wi-Fi in Independence, too. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Titus. Michael, is it Alkern? Alkire? Thank you, Michael. I apologize for not pronouncing it correctly.
You're all right. Not many people do.
Thank you. And if I could, Michael, I'll just ask Lucy, is it Yount, to be ready to go next? Lucy?
I'm ready.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you're, oh, excuse me, Lucy Young. Please forgive me, Lucy, and you'll be next. So thank you. Please proceed, sir.
So my name is Michael Alkire. I reside at 3123 South Northern Boulevard. I just wanted to come in tonight and speak in opposition to last week's study about the session regarding the solid waste program considerations. I don't want my freedoms taken away in order to pick the company that I want to haul my trash. I've been in Independence since 98, and ever since then, Ted's been my carrier. Anytime I've had an issue, I call them. It's resolved immediately. I've had other neighbors that have had different companies that have not had the same service that I've had. So ultimately, they've ended up switching to Ted's. And I just wanted to come in and voice my opposition to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Young, you're next, and after that would be, is it, I wanna say Jared Keen Funk? Would that be next?
Jared.
Jared, so if you can come up and stand behind Lucy, that'd be great. That way, we can keep the process going. Ms. Young, please proceed.
Okay. We discussed this when I was on city council back in 2006. And it was decided at that time that it would not be in the best interest of the citizens to consolidate to one or two trash haulers. I'm here to speak for those that are on a fixed income. That includes the working poor, retirees on Social Security, and the disabled. Not having enough money to pay our bills keeps us awake at night. We live in a yo-yo society. You're on your own. We have to deal with inflation and rising costs. Spires doubled their rates. The gasoline tax has increased. Our Jackson County property tax increased again. Food prices have risen. We are taxed at brick-and-mortar stores, and when we shop on the internet, too. The IPL director recommended that the PUAB approve the removal of a 6% IPL rate reduction. That means that my IPL electric bill will increase $100 a year annually. At the study session, municipal service director presented a proposal to have the city oversee our trash services. She told the PUAB at their December meeting that the city would not be getting into the trash business, but simply overseeing the RFQs and adding a line item of $1 a month to our utility bill. That IPL director stated at the same PUAB meeting that IPL had about 57,000 customers. I looked at an old 2018 dashboard, and it showed Water had about 44,000, and WPC had about 45,000. So that tells me that you're gonna have to use the IPL 57,000 customer list probably to initiate getting everyone to have trash service. So that means the people in this town that use Everji will not be included on this utility billing. And that sounds like a lawsuit in the making. The charter language clearly states that the city cannot use the utilities for profit. Are the city utility customers named proprietary? And should they be used only with our permission? How will the utility be reimbursed for this service? Will we eventually be charged the 9.08 franchise fee? Can this adversely affect those receiving energy assistance? Only using the 57,000 IPL customers, this means that they would collect over $57,000 a month. Mine and Erin's numbers differ a little bit, but you get the gist. I equated that to $684,000 annually. A staff spoke using this newly found revenue source to create a solid waste manager position. The additional money would be used to clean up the city's streets. In June, our police chief presented a study that showed the cost of the homeless camp cleanups. Will this money be absorbed to finish cleaning up those camps? I've lived in Independence for well over 30 years. I've had several trash companies, and Ted is the very best. Others may not feel the same way, and they may have loyalty to their own trash company. But for the city to run the trash service only to use it as a revenue source sounds much like they are anti-small business. I have the right to choose where I shop for my groceries. I want the right to choose my trash service. Kansas City's in the trash business, and look at the garbage that lines their streets. And those are paid for by anybody that works in Kansas City by that 1% of the people that work there. You don't even necessarily have to live there. At the last study session, one of the council members expressed his displeasure by the way IPL was run.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Look at how expensive our sewer bills are, too. Both are city-run utilities. So why on earth would I want the city to run yet another utility when the ones they're running now are allegedly running at a loss and more expensive than the surrounding cities? I can't change electric companies if I'm dissatisfied with their services. The council needs to stop their tax-and-spend philosophy, or in this case, a fee-and-spend philosophy. It may only be $1 a month, but we have a 6% rate increase coming on our IPL bills. We just absorbed the cost of those meter cans because a council member said it wasn't worth talking about $35,000. Inflation increases my day-to-day living. I am not receiving the $600 a month stipend that you are for the use of my car. Lucky you. The city's mindset is that this trash service takeover is free money, but it comes out of your constituents' wallets. You need to remember that elections have consequences, and the only free cheese is in a mousetrap. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. You're up next. And then Jason Holberg, if you can be ready to go behind Jared, that'd be terrific. Thank you, Jason. Jared, please proceed.
All right, I'm going to try to make this quick. I don't normally do this sort of stuff. I've lived in, I'm 21 years old. I've lived in Independence more than half my life. I went to school with your kids. I've seen your spouses, your families out in public at things like Project Shine, Pets in the Park. My point is, whether you like it or not, you are pillars of this community. Everybody here is looking up to you to make sure that whatever you do is in the best interest of Independence. It would be beneficial for you guys to bear that in mind as you go on with this, whatever choice you make. People here are upset. They're scared. They're frightened for, you know, their livelihoods all over this. Whatever you do, make sure you make the right choice. We voted you in, and we can just as easily vote you out.
Thank you, Jared. Jason, please come up and state your name and your address, please. And then next will be Bill Miller, please. So if Bill can be ready to go. And Jason, please proceed.
Hello, I'm Jason Holberg. I live at 31103 East Blue Mills Road, Buckland, Missouri, outside the city limits of Independence. Second-generation owner of AAA disposal service. We have picked up in City of Independence for almost 60 years. Been in business since 1963. We're hauling the city of Independence municipal buildings for going on over 10 years. I know they have the city cleanups at Vista Lot and have been doing that for several years. We used to do a lot more business there before they started raising rates. They started raising all the outside rates for people bringing their trash there, and it just started falling off. Over the past two years, it has dropped dramatically compared to what we used to haul. We used to do neighborhood cleanups where the city would set boxes at local schools or churches, and people had a chance to bring it there if it was a lot closer to their home. So their trash was bulky items, other things they wanted to dispose of, was disposed of there and didn't cost the citizens much money. I know the city was paying for it at the time, and still are. But we quit doing that due to the cost it was costing the city. And I'm strongly against the opposition here of the waste. Years ago, they brought this to the council, and there was a committee that looked at it then, probably in, I'm guessing, the late 90s. And they brought it to the council and talked about putting in zones in. When it was all said and done, the zones were going to be bid out, and they bid them out, and that's when Duffin Ball was in business. And it was gonna go to all the Duffin Ball because they were way cheaper than anybody else, and they were gonna take all the zones. So there wasn't gonna be any private haulers left. And the city, since then, decided not to do that. It's been brought back up. Over time, there had been fewer and fewer haulers along the way. We're down a lot compared to what it used to be in the 1990s. And they still chose to allow another hauler to be moved back into Independence and issued them license. Since then, they've been sold, bought, different company owns it. But the bottom line is, they still allowed another hauler back into Independence, put more trucks on the street. I'll agree, the trucks are running in neighborhoods now. We run very efficient. We don't lap over time and time again in the same neighborhood. One truck per neighborhood, and we move on. The question is about that. Like Dusty said, you're singling out the trash trucks. What about all the trucks that FedEx, UPS, and Amazon run on every street, every day, all over in Independence and every other city? And some of the proposals here that they've used as recommendations from other cities, it'd be hard to compare because every city's different. Two of these I know in particularly in Excelsior Springs and Liberty are hauled by Republic. They limit the size of carts they're using. Carts that we use and that Ted's use are all 95-gallon carts. Those two cities are using 65-gallon carts. So you're gonna reduce the amount of trash that people are allowed to put out. If it's not in the cart, it don't go in the truck. We do the same thing. We pick up extra trash outside the cart. I just think it would be best not to do anything with this, not move forward. Appreciate your time. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Is Mr. Miller up? Calling for Mr. Miller. Okay, William Hicks. And then after William Hicks will be Billy Brooks. So if Billy could be ready to go, that'd be great. Say what?
I'm gonna speak on the resolution, so should I do?
Are you signed up?
Yeah.
Okay, what's your name?
Billy Brooks.
Okay, yeah. Stand behind him so you're ready to go. So, yep, that's who I met, Billy, so please forgive me. I was not very clear, and you're right, so thank you. Mr. Hicks, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks, please proceed.
Yes, William Hicks. I live at 4160 South Carriage, down in Carriage Hills. Like I said, I watched the thing like everybody else did, and there was a few points that kind of disappointed me, the fact that they brought up that this was automatically gonna clean up some of the things on the streets, and that when the presenter was asked about it, she couldn't quantify the other cities, how that had helped any. And one thing that I was worried about is... And one thing that I was worried about is that you're going to be managing contracts. I understand that. You're going to be managing that. And that, say, you give this out the first time, and then whatever you decide the cycle's going to be, two to three years, whatever it is, when you're going to re-bid it, if Ted's and AAA and some of these are out of business, then when it comes time to re-bid it, there's not going to be anyone there to, for the competition. So that's kind of worries me in the long run. But I like the way it is, and I think it's working well. I agree, we need to do something to clean up the city and do more maintenance on the roads. We've seen a lot of deterioration, especially up 39th Street with some of the curbs and everything. It doesn't look very nice, but whatever we need to do. But I agree with getting everybody together and coming up with a good solution. But I'm with, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
And I use Ted's.
Billy, hold on just one second. I want to cue up the next person. David Finger, is that right?
Yes.
So David, if you can come up and be behind Billy, that'd be great. Thank you, David. Billy, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I want to speak about Resolution 22833. That's what my comments will be addressed to. So, good evening, Mayor Rowland and the City Council. My name is Billy Brooks, and I live at 20,004 East 24th Terrace Court South. And I am here tonight to oppose the potential short-term rental on Hanover Street in Prairie Landing. Prairie Landing is not a vacation destination or tourist attraction. It's a community of families, young and old, and retirees. When my husband and I purchased our home in Prairie Landing 13 years ago, we did so because it was safe, it was quiet, it was secluded from the hustle and bustle of the city, and it feels like you're living in the country with easy access to the city. There's lots of young families, and there was a new elementary school. The ideal of a short-term rental in Prairie Landing doesn't fit in with the ideal what I'm looking for in a neighborhood. We all want to feel safe, have quiet surroundings, and to know our neighbors. This does the opposite. We don't want strangers, transients, living in our neighborhood. We do not want strangers coming and going all hours of the night. We do not want the noise, the extra traffic, or the potential of crime from individuals who are not fully vetted by the VRBO. There are lots of children in our community that walk home from the school bus each day, and having unknown individuals residing in this STR is a safety concern that we, as parents, don't want to have to worry about. Several neighbors that live on Hanover have submitted legal protest petitions to show that we do not support this STR in our community. At this time, I believe that the city doesn't have sufficient regulations in place to oversee these rentals, and that concerns neighbors, because if something was to occur at this rental, what course of action could the residents take? Lastly, I understand this is an investment for Ms. Carney, but our homes are also an investment. Ms. Carney doesn't live in Prairie Landing, we do. We know our neighbors, we take interest in what happens in our neighborhood, we invest in our schools and local businesses. We are just looking to protect our children, community, and our nest egg. On November 15, 2022, the planning commissioners handed down a unanimous decision to not approve this short-term rental, and I would request that you do the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you.
And David, you're up next. And if I can have you hang on just for a second, it'll be William Hoots. William Hoots will be up next. Huh?
Two William Hoots, J or L?
J. So if William J. could be ready to go, that'd be perfect. Thank you. And then William L., you'll be after that, so thank you. Mr. Finger, please proceed.
Sure. I wanted to speak on the same topic that Billy spoke on regarding the Airbnb. I live across the street from the proposed Airbnb, and when they spoke before the city commission, one of the things that they continuously talked about was long-term rentals and not being able to take care of the property for a long-term rental, which is why that they wanted to do a short-term rental. I wanted to say that our next-door neighbor is actually a long-term rental. He's been on the property for about a year. He has yard service, he puts up Christmas lights, he takes care of the property. So if that's even remotely a consideration, I don't think that that's going to be a problem. I agree with Billy that we won't know our neighbors if we have people in there all the time, strangers all the time, we have children in the neighborhood. It's not really a place for that kind of business, I think, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Finger. William J. Hoots, and then next up would be William L. Hoots. So William, please proceed.
Hi, I'm William Hoots. I live at 19805 East 24th Terrace, here in Independence, along with the last two speakers in the same community. When we all purchased, the community started probably more than 10 or 12 years ago, but actually in the last few years, it's probably tripled or quadrupled, it's almost completed. So there's been a lot of new houses up in the last few years. I am also concurring with the previous two speakers on, we all had covenants that we were told by the lenders and the builders that were in place but not currently active. We bought the houses and took a mortgage out with the auspices of knowing that we had to follow those. And I'm against short-term rentals. I'm for small businesses, but I think in an isolated community like it is, it's very-- it's quaint, it's reserved, it's away from more hustle and bustle type of communities, and it's not really a place that would even attract someone, I would think, to do short-term rentals. There's nothing really out there but single-family homes. I just want to propose that short-term rentals need to be investigated more. You guys need to have policies in place with the city before entertaining the thought of allowing some of those. And that's basically what I wanted to say. We're still in a pandemic, people, you need to mask up, but that's it.
Thank you, William. William L. Hoots?
Hi, my name is William L. Hoots. I live at 2318 South Heartland Court, Independence. I'm a block over from where this particular house is. I'm speaking on the same subject as the last three speakers. I was sold my house based-- I lived at Hialeah for 27 years, just two miles away, and moved there, and one of the-- because of the covenants, one of the reasons I moved there was there would be no short-term rentals. I can't speak anymore about what the last three speakers have spoken, because they've eloquently said everything that needed to be said. So in conclusion, I just want to say I'm against it. We have children in the neighborhood. You don't know what's coming in there when you do that. You have no idea who's-- no matter what they say about policing it, it doesn't work. So I just want to register my opposition to any kind of short-term rental. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoots. And we have next Kevin Delaney and then Lisa Hops. Hi, Kevin.
Hi.
And if you can state your address and your name and address, please, and then Lisa can be ready to go after that, so thank you.
My name is Kevin Delaney. I live at 12512 East 49th Terrace South, Independence. I was actually trying to jot down some notes, because the people that were speaking were pretty darn good. But basically, I've come to talk about garbage. Been in the business most of my life, and the one-hauler model definitely leads itself to having one of two companies, both corporate, that own landfills in the area. I'm thinking outbid every company in this room. And you guys all my life, and still do, believe that small business is the backbone of America. I believe in it. I love looking around this room and seeing high vids from all kinds of different companies. And that's pretty much what I wanted to say. I've run companies from Sacramento to Orlando. Independence has been my home for 14 years, and I was a general manager for one of the large corporate waste companies. And now I work for a family-owned company. Really like it. So again, thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And Lisa, we didn't have written down what you would like to talk about.
Oh, trash.
Trash, okay, very good. Well, it was either that or short-term rentals, and I was betting trash, so.
My name is Lisa Hoppus, and I live at 645 South Kistner Drive in Independence, Missouri, Just a couple added things. I know we heard Dusty say earlier that they take an estimated 1,100 phone calls a week in their residential department. I called the City of Independence Utilities today, and I sat on hold for 7 minutes and 20 seconds before anyone answered. And in one of these models that you guys proposed, the city would be handling that, and I just think you also need to think about how many more employees you're going to need to handle the call volume. And that's just one company, and there are six currently. I live in a neighborhood that has an HOA that requires actually AAA trash. I hired an attorney when they got a little letter saying that I couldn't have Ted's trash because they don't pay for my trash service, so they don't get to pick my trash service. And so they let me continue to use Ted's, and I don't think that the City of Independence would benefit in any way its citizens for you guys to go to the proposed things that you guys have currently laid out. So, but I do think that it is important that every household be required to have a household trash service, so that is it.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
And Karen Dunaway, is that correct? Hello, Karen. Karen, Karen, Karen. All right. We will proceed, then. That is all the folks that we had signed up for discussion this evening. So we'll proceed with our agenda. Mr. Mayor, please proceed.
I'm moved to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Okay. There's been a motion to receive the reports and recommendations to the city manager. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. Any discussion, or does anyone want to pull any items for consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Could you please pull number three from the reports and recommendations of the city manager, and number 22833 from the resolutions?
So number three, and what was the other one, please?
22833.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on one second. I just want to make a note, so I've got who pulled what. Please proceed.
I'd like to pull number seven, please.
Item number seven?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Pull number one?
Item number one. All right, I would just ask that you guys help me out, make sure you go in order. I'm just teasing. Okay, item number one is withheld, so we've got-- does anyone want to pull out number two, three, or number two, four, five, or six?
Mr. Mayor?
Apparently we do.
I'd like to pull number 22832.
22832. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay. If we can take the roll on the consent-- well, I need to do each one individually, don't I, first? Or do the--
We keep the rolling consent--
Do the rolling consent, and then go back and do them. Okay. Those items that were not pulled, any discussion on the consent agenda, and then we'll vote on that, and then go back and talk about the individual items. Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. So the consent items that were not pulled are approved, 7 to 0. And let me go back, and the first item, I'm going to go, if I can, please, by number that was on the order, so I don't mean to offend any councilmembers if you asked first, but I'm going to go with item number one first. Councilmember McCandless, if you can talk about the item number one, please.
So this is just approval of minutes, because I wasn't at those meetings. I can't vote on them, so I would just recuse. So it would just be a regular vote.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and take the roll.
I would-- you need to--
A motion in a second?
Yeah, I need to approve item number one.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to approve item number one. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
No.
You have to recuse.
Oh, I'm sorry, recusing.
Yep.
Thank you. Aren't you abstaining? I'm sorry.
Yep, abstaining or recused, yep.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And it was six yes and one recusal for item number one. Okay. Item number three, councilmember Stewart, please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, if the RFQ, once it's issued, I realize there's no-- at this time, it says no cost to the city, but once it goes through and somebody puts a bid in, who'll be paying for it at that point for the master developer? Or what fund will be paying for it?
So there'll first be a RFQ, and then we'll go through that process, and then there would be a RFP step in that. And at that point in time, then we'd negotiate with whatever party developer team was selected, and then we'd come back at that point with funding options, whether there was a cost to the city or not.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anything else, councilmember Stewart?
No, and I'll make a motion for approval on item number three.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item number three. Any more discussion? No further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number three on the consent agenda is approved, 7-0. Okay, excuse me. Item number seven was pulled by councilmember Fierce. Councilmember Fierce, would you like to talk about that or make the motion?
Yeah, I'll talk about it, and then I'll make a motion about that.
Okay.
So I just wanted to lift up for the council's benefit the-- some results of open enrollment for the Stable Health Insurance Plan. You'll recall that we went through a process of creating a small committee to deal with some issues that we were concerned about in the budget process. We did that, and the open enrollment process is now complete, and I'm happy to report that there is good news for the health insurance plan. You'll remember that we were-- one of our primary goals was to move people from the OAP 1 plan, if at all possible, to one of the other high deductible plans. And I just want to give you a couple of pieces of information and then let you know what the result from a financial standpoint looks like it's going to be. So we were able to move in OAP 1, which is the-- what I'd call the Cadillac Plan. We moved from a 69% enrollment in '22 to a 38% enrollment in '23. And so that's really good news. Most of that comes from our active employees and not retirees, which is unfortunate, but that's just the way it is. In addition, in OAP 2, we moved from 20% enrollment to 28% enrollment, which is an increase in that one as well. Projected plan increase before we started this whole thing was an expected increase The actual plan expense increase will be about 1.5%. So that's a savings of over, best we can figure, savings of over a million and a half dollars for our health insurance plan, which is really what we needed to see happen to be able to move things along as we had hoped they would. Just a couple of things in addition that we discussed, and that the Staywell Committee, the Employee Staywell Committee, will be working on... They'll be working on a wellness program for our employees and retirees. They'll also be working on additional movement from the OAP-1, hopefully, to one of the other high deductible plans. So I just wanted to pass that along because we did meet this past week. It is good news. We've had good response from everybody, really, that's been involved in this, and I just wanted to pass that along to the council. And so then with that said, I'll move approval of item seven.
Okay, we've got a motion for item number seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Very, very briefly. I want to, again, take every opportunity I can to thank the folks that have made this small committee so incredibly successful. Councilmember Fierce, City Manager Zach Walker, Loggers President Bob Sorensen, who's with us as usual, Loggers Board Member Cindy Culp, and our very own firefighter captain, Mike Veat. Those folks got in a room and put pencil and paper, and along with some professional consultants, made this happen in a very spectacular and very fast way. And it is giving folks a very Merry Christmas. So, thank you very much.
I would also like to concur with my colleagues' comments about... I want to commend you, Councilmember, for your work in leading that committee. For all the committee members, for the retirees group, you worked well together. It was a gargantuan effort, and you all sat down in a room and were reasonable and had great discussions, and I cannot applaud you enough for doing that. I felt really good after it happened, and now to see these kinds of results, I'm thrilled. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone who was involved with that. Councilmember, thank you for your leadership on that, and it's, you know, 1.5 million-dollar savings is great. We should probably count up every minute how much you saved per minute. It was probably $1,000 a minute at least, so...
Mr. Mayor, one additional item. This item is on the stop-loss insurance for that healthcare plan. That's going to yield another $400,000 roughly in savings as well, so...
Okay. And that's another item on the agenda here in a bit.
That's what this is.
Okay, very good. Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you. Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number seven is approved, seven to zero.
22832.
Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, Mr., if I may address the acting city manager, Deputy City Manager Norris. The addition to the clinical social worker, that is for our coresponders for our police department as they work through those issues with that co-responder.
So that particular position is for the arch program that we've been piloting in partnership with the fire department.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I move for approval of 228... Hold on. 32. Thank you.
Second. We've got a motion and a second for 22832. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item 22832 passes seven to zero. Mr. Councilmember Stewart, you asked for 22833 to be stepped... Pulled out, so if you could give your discussion on that, and please make a motion, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the applicant on this resolution happens to live in my district, and the property is located in Councilmember Steinmeier's district. I actually spoke with the applicant earlier today, and she no longer wishes to do a short-term rental at that property. She is not here tonight, and I would actually like to make a motion to indefinitely table resolution 22833.
Mayor?
Please proceed.
City Council, we have a point of clarification. The code actually requires the city council to take action on the application. It would be the recommendation of the city councilor's office that action be taken at tonight's meeting as opposed to postponing it. Is there any questions on that?
Well, if I could add a little more clarification to that, I know when Mr. Norris and I spoke earlier, the recommendation was that that was affirmed, the planning commission's recommendation, which was to deny the application, if I'm correct.
The city council has four options based on the resolution. You approve it, you prove it with stipulations, you remand it back to the planning commission, or you deny it. And so, you know, from a straightforward standpoint, it sounds like the applicant is no longer interested in pursuing this project, so denial would be... Affirming the planning commission's action would be the proper action there.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion. I'll just make a motion for approval at this time.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You'll withdraw your motion?
Let's... Hang on a second.
We need to clarify. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Let's get clarification. If we want to deny the application or deny the appeal and affirm the planning commission's denial...
Right.
How do we need to vote? What words need to come out of our mouths?
That could be accomplished by a member of the council making a motion to affirm the planning commission's denial of application. I don't have 22-833. That would be sufficient to effectuate Councilmember Hobart, what you're talking about.
Okay. So could somebody make a motion to affirm the planning commission's denial of this application?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second to affirm the planning commission's denial of this application. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
This application was denied affirming the planning commission's recommendation for denial, and it passed seven to zero. Very, very good. That brings us to public hearings, and this will be opening our first public hearing.
A public hearing for the application received from Jackson County Shrine Club for a consumption of intoxicating liquor license located at 120 and 1/2 South Pleasant. This is a full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Skennell. I'm the community development director. So Jackson County Shrine Club, located just off the square, currently rents out their facilities for events. They are seeking a consumption of liquor license. That license would allow them, when they rent out that facility, those renting out that facility would have the option to bring in alcoholic beverages. There are no other liquor licenses within 300 feet of this location. However, given that this location is within 300 feet of residential and a couple of churches, it does require city council approval, and staff has nothing further to add.
Okay. Anyone here to speak in favor or opposition to this application? Please proceed. Ms. Young? Go right ahead.
Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri, 64057. It may not be related, but I was very upset when we sold the water department to the Shriners. And when I drove by there the other day, it's still in a dis... Just in disrepair. And if this organization is related to that building and the caretaking of that building, I know you can't attach it to this particular public hearing, but I want it known that I'm upset, I know the neighbors are upset, and I think the city council should be aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor or opposition? Anyone else speaking in favor or opposition? Anyone else speak in favor or opposition? With that, I'll close the public hearing.
Council action is requested regarding the application received from Jackson County Shrine Club for consumption of intoxicating liquor license located at 120 and 1/2 South Pleasant.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just a question for Mr. Skennell, if I may. And that question is, is if the churches or anyone there close by had registered any kind of concern about that?
We have not heard any complaints or any calls from nearby property owners.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Thank you. A couple of points and one fun fact. First point is, the Jackson County Shrine Club does not have anything to do with the water department in any way, shape, or form. That's a discussion for another time. Number two, have not heard anything from the residents, churches, surrounds, from the surrounding neighborhoods, anyone that is in opposition. I have spoken to the applicant several times. I feel very comfortable with moving forward and proceeding in affirmative vote with this. Fun fact, this was formed in July of... July 18th, 1945, so it's one of the longest-running shrine clubs that we have here in Jackson County, so kudos to them.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
And the application is approved, seven to zero. This opens our second public hearing.
A full public hearing for the application received from QuickTrip Corporation for an intoxicating liquor of all kinds and the original package license for QuickTrip number 192 that will be located at 16813 East 23rd Street South. This is a full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So QuickTrip is currently constructing the new facility there around 291 and 23rd Street. This will be just under a 5,000-square-foot building. They are seeking a liquor license to sell liquor in the original package. There are a couple establishments that already sell liquor around there. The Price Chopper there at the Hub Shopping Center, as well as La Fuente Mexican Restaurant there in the shopping center on the east side of 291. Because there is a church within 300 feet, this does require city council approval, and staff has nothing further to add.
Thank you, Mr. Skennell. Any further discussion? Anyone else want to speak in favor or opposition? Anyone else speak in favor or opposition to this application? Anyone else want to speak in favor or opposition to this application? Okay. I'm glad I did it three times. It was... You were this close. You were this close.
I won't keep you guys very long. My name is Caitlin Helsper. I'm here to represent QuickTrip, and I just wanted to let you know I appreciate your time this evening, and I am here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none. Any further discussion? Okay, this will close the public hearing. And Madam City Clerk?
Council action is requested on the application received from QuickTrip Corporation for an intoxicating liquor of all kinds and the original package license for QuickTrip number 192 that will be located at 16813 East 23rd Street South.
Do I have a motion and a second? Okay, thanks. Yes.
If I could ask Mr. Skennell the same question. Any comments from the church there close by or anything?
We have not received any calls.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the application is approved, seven to zero. This takes us to non-ordinance action items. Madam City Clerk, please read the bills.
Bill number 22-835, a resolution directing the city manager to record, livestream, and upload meetings of the City Charter Review Commission.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So this committee is very important, as we all know. It's going to possibly recommend changes to our city charter that's going to fundamentally change the way our city operates. This is a citizens' committee that I believe every citizen has the right to be able to know what's being discussed in their meetings without having to physically come to the meetings, because there's lots of reasons people can't come. So I implore my colleagues to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. We don't need a motion, so any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd like to ask the deputy city manager a question.
Sure.
Mr. Norris, I'm wondering if you can tell us what the estimated cost of... If this was approved, what the estimated cost would be?
So in the agenda item, we estimated a two-hour meeting. Typical two-hour meeting would be about a little over $200 in just staff time. That includes a little bit of prep time before the meeting and then production time after the meeting. But of course, if it's televised, keep in mind, there are very limited... There are locations that we can have that capability, but there... Which include this building and IUC.
Okay, so, you know, if they meet, let's say, 26 times a year, every other week, that's in the excess of $5,000, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Is it in our ordinance that we created the Charter Commission, or Charter Review Commission, where they meet? I don't know that the place was designated.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So my concern there is that they really could meet anywhere they want, and obviously we only have two places available for recording. And I know that trying to watch the PUAB meeting from last Thursday, trying to hear the PUAB mass... PUAB recording last Thursday was pretty miserable. So I... I will likely be known on this. I just don't see the... We got logistics problems, I think, so... That's my take.
Very good. Anyone else? Please proceed.
And just response to that, if we pass this, then we will have to have it in one of two rooms in order to record it or have it available. I don't think you do this in the shadows. You've got to be transparent with this. This is too big of a process, and we talk a lot about transparency and making everything in the light, so I don't know how we not support this. So, I don't know how we not support this, and $5,000, I'm sorry, that's dropping the bucket. We just saved a million dollars on healthcare, so I think we can afford this. And this is something that I think our residents would actually encourage us to do. So, I think with this passing, it'll, it'll force us to be in one of two rooms to have the meetings so that they're recorded. And I think that's the best transparency that we can provide to our residents. So I'll be approving this.
Anyone else for discussion?
Mr. City Manager, they could also do this virtually, correct?
It's, virtual meetings are typically done committee by committee, that, that decision's made by each committee through their, through their bylaws or their standards of how they want to operate.
I have one other question about the cost. So, does the individuals that come in to help record the meeting and do everything that's necessary, do they get paid overtime for that?
Depends on the individuals that come in to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I would add one, one additional thing, I'm sorry. Depending on the time of day, if this room were to be used, a court is in here Monday through Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Mr., Mrs. Councilmember, please.
So for the discussions on the city charter, these are going to be really substantive give-and-take discussions, where people are going to need to be able to look at each other and, and talk about, you know, what are the pros and cons of whatever aspect is being proposed or discussed. This arrangement is terrible for that kind of interpersonal interaction and to be able to listen to hear. So I, I would strongly argue against using this venue for that kind of discussion. The other is that the IUC is not designed for, you know, tables close to each other for people to be able to have these kinds of important give-and-take. I, I don't know that we have a venue that supports well being able to broadcast, and people need to really be able to have those discussions without worrying that it's going to be everywhere on social media, taking a slice or a piece here and there, as opposed to thinking about it in its totality. These are public meetings that anyone can attend. I'm going to do my best to be at several of them if I can, and I think offering these people who are giving their time the, the ability to have important conversations in a room that is well-suited to those is wise, so I will be voting no on this.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'm sorry. I, I fail to understand why, when we're going to have discussions, broad, small, I don't care, of changing our form of government with citizens who are volunteering their time. Number one, if they meet during the day, not everybody can come to a public meeting. We know that. PUAB is not regularly attended because it's at 2:00 in the afternoon. People that would want to be involved, even if it's an evening, they need to, if we're going to do that, then it has to be an evening session, and these probably could get lengthy. But the idea that we don't want to record them, that concerns me a great deal. And anyone who votes no on this, I, I'm just going to be asking the question, what are we trying to hide? They, it should be, it should be out in the open, it should be as clear as it can be, should be recorded for anyone who can't participate, be there so they can watch it later date. That's what good government does. We allow you to watch, to listen, and to understand, so that you can go up to your elected officials and ask questions and, and air your concerns to us. If we're not going to do this, I'm telling you, this, this concerns me a great deal about the process.
Any further discussion? Okay. I go from the perspective that we've asked these people, they're not elected officials, to look at our charter. It is not a question that the charter will be selected or approved in silence. It will not be put in a dark room where nobody will see it and asked to approve it. This document will be reviewed by all of us, and we've asked people to serve on this committee, and we don't do this with any other committees that we create like this. This request has never been made to this body that I'm aware of. So to bring this question up right now, under these circumstances, I just don't understand the request. So with that, I'll be voting no, because these meetings will in fact be public, they will in fact be published, people can attend them, and they can certainly ask for copies of the minutes to see what was discussed and what was reviewed. So with that being said, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
No.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
No. The motion fails. We have three yeses and four noes. This takes us to first readings. We have two appropriations ordinances, which will receive two meetings. So Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 22-111, an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a contract between the City of Independence, Missouri and the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission, providing for participation in the Traffic Engineering Assistance Program and Design Services for a traffic study at Nolan Road and 30th Street for intersection safety operational analysis. Bill number 22-112, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2, General Commercial to District R6, single-family residential for the property at 400 North Osage Street, Independence, Missouri.
Pardon me?
That's okay, Councilmember.
Yes, on 22-113, I'd, we need to take a pause. Mr. Mayor, I need to move to remand that. It's come to my attention that there's some, I need to move to remand this to correct some inaccuracies in the document.
Second?
We've got a motion and a second to postpone 22-113, is that correct?
Move to remand it.
Remand it? Okay.
City staff can correct it.
There's been a motion to remand this item 22-113, so city staff can correct it, and then if I can ask a question of the Assistant City Manager, you will bring that back probably in January, we suspect?
Yes, sir.
Probably the, would you be ready for the January 3 meeting?
That would be the goal, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Go ahead and take the roll on all of them, or just that last one?
Just the first one.
The 22-113?
Do you remand that back to staff?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Do you remand it back to staff?
We're going to, do we have a motion for 22-113 to be remanded back to staff?
We already have the motion.
You did it? Okay. I'm having short-term memory issues there. Very good. With that being said, any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 22-113 will be remanded back to staff, and we probably will see it January 3. Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
On the next item, pardon me, Madam Clerk, item 22-114, I have the same motion, remand to do, allow staff to make corrections.
I'll second that motion.
There's been a motion and a second, remand it. Have you read it? Have you read 24?
We, we're not reading one.
Okay. Very good. Any discussion on 22-114? All right. Hearing none, let's go ahead and take the roll call for remanding 22-114.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 22-114 has been remanded back to the staff, seven to zero. Okay?
Bill number 22-115, an ordinance admitting ordinance number 19226 by updating the necessary easement descriptions for parcels 5 and 20 of the 24 Highway Complete Streets Phase 1 project, project number 111801, in order to make necessary design changes. Bill number 22-116, an ordinance imposing a marijuana sales tax at the rate of 3% of the receipts from the sale at retail of adult-use marijuana within the City of Independence, Missouri, which shall remain in effect at said rate thereafter until repealed by the voters of the city, calling for the proposition adopting said tax to be placed on the ballot at the regularly scheduled election to be held April 4, 2023, proposing the form of the ballots and directing the city clerk to do all things called for by law in connection with the holding of said election.
Okay, and that brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Stewart, any comments?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, there was a public speaker earlier that spoke of a business off 23rd Street and Ellison Way. Could you check into that, the stuff he brought up about the possible codes violations being in conflict with that business, and report back to us on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember?
That's all, that's all tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. One, Merry Christmas to everybody, and enjoy the seasons, and the cold weather is coming upon us. And a big thank you to our municipal, municipal service and everything those street crews are going to be doing out there in the cold, getting those streets prepped and all of that stuff. So, thank you. Two thanks, Inglewood had a, their Thursday Art Walk last week, and also I attended their neighborhood open house with Councilman Spheres that was there, and it was a come and go, so if I missed anybody, sorry, but it was a great event. It's good to see an old building coming alive and, and the neighborhood coming to one gathering point there for, for festivities. So it was a fun, cool time. So Merry Christmas, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Spheres?
Yes, I just, too, would like to wish our citizens and staff and my colleagues a great Merry Christmas, and you have a great time with family and friends and holidays. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hobart?
Thank you, Ma- Mayor Rowland. I, I did this last Christmas and last holiday season, I'd like to do it again, just to remind folks that as, as happy as the holidays can be for a lot of us, for some folks, they're not, and for folks that, that suffer from mental illnesses or other trauma, other conditions, other health problems, other just conditions in their life, that the holidays can be extremely hard and extremely traumatic and, and really sad times. So, please, keep an eye on your friends and your family and your neighbors, and if you know someone that needs help, or if you need help, please seek that out. And please, please remind me, either Councilmember McCandless or Deputy City Manager Norris, there's a new number you can call that's a hotline, 988. Thank you, 988. Chief Dussman knows it. Thank you. 988, folks, 988. If you know anybody that's suffering, that's contemplating suicide, that's suffering from serious mental health issues, this time of year is extremely hard. It's extremely hard on our first responders, it's extremely hard on our healthcare providers, on hospital staff. It's extremely hard on all our loved ones, it can be. So 988, and, and Merry Christmas. Take care of, take care of yourself and others. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. End of another year, 2022 is coming to an end quickly. It's been my privilege to be a part of this council for another year, serving the third district. I, I do appreciate everything that constituents and our citizens do for our city. A week ago last Saturday, I was invited down to Walmart in my district on 39th Street on a Saturday morning to watch the firefighters bless 55 kids in Independence with some gifts. And I can tell you that I, I was energized by that. It was a wonderful event. Chief Short, your, your guys did a great job. I don't know whose faces were more rewarding. The firefighters, as they took the kids in, and the kids, or the firefighters when they brought the kids out. They, it was, it was just wonderful to see how much they enjoyed it and how much the children were blessed. I talked to a lot of the parents, and, you know, it was such a big thing for them. And so, I appreciate that effort. I know it's a lot of work, so. I do thank everyone for just the hard work, city staff, what you've done this year, 2022. Look forward to another great year next year. We'll probably not see you till 2023, so everybody be safe, have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Candless?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank city staff. I want to thank Lisa for her study session last week. It obviously engendered a very robust discussion by the citizenry, but that doesn't mean that we don't have discussions about how we try to make our city better. So, I, I appreciate bringing new ideas and having us think through those. What we choose to do with that remains to be determined, but thank you for, for setting that up. I also wanted to say thank you to IPL. I've spent two years on the PUAB and learning as much as I can about the electric utility. They are in a challenging space with increasing fuel costs, with complex energy contracts, with a rapidly evolving energy future, and trying to use the best crystal ball that we have to make decisions. And I know that we will have some challenging discussions coming up, and I just appreciate being a thought partner with you for the things that we want. People want reliable energy, they want affordable energy, and they want a well-run operation. So, we look forward to working with you to continue a legacy of serving the people of Independence, so please give our best to your IPL employees. And I want to second what Councilmember Hobart said about our first responders during Christmas. Often, you are seeing stressed families and challenging situations when you are not at home with your families and children, so with deep appreciation for the service that you will give, especially in this period where many people are traveling and seeing their families and, and you are providing services to our city. So, thank you and Merry Christmas to all the people who make Independence a great place.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I just want to thank everyone who gave us emails and came to talk tonight. I know some of them have already left, but I wanted to say thank you to them for their passion and their care and concern for our city. And I love to hear their comments and their concerns, and, and I just want to say thank you to all of them for being here and, and sharing their comments. I also wanted to thank the city staff for all the work that you did over this last year. A great job. I love working with you. You do a great job, and, and just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do. So, we're looking forward to a 2023, and with that, Merry Christmas, and we'll call the meeting adjourned.